All right, it is now 1:30, so I call this meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Madam Clerk, will you do the roll call?
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
And our first item of business is the county engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have five items today. The first is Resolution 22-49, authorizing an agreement with Security Fence Group, Inc. for the traffic signal maintenance, repair, and minor construction project countywide at their lowest and best bid of $116,220.52 through February 28th of 2023. Number 50 is authorizing a cost participation agreement with the City of Kettering for repairs to a county bridge as part of the city's Spalding Road Resurfacing Project. 51 is to accept the Medlar Road improvements and reduce the performance bond amount to the maintenance bond amount of $8,007,191.14 for Aberdeen Section 1 in Miami Township. And then we have two amendments to agreements. 52 is with Grumball Construction, Inc., for the Lyons Road Bridge Replacement Project in Washington Township, providing $17,887.24, the original amount, for a revised total And 53 is with Outdoor Enterprise, the Whip Road Bridge Replacement Project in Washington Township, by decreasing the original amount by $8,160.80 for a revised total of $380,669.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 County Sheriff, Rob Struck.
I'll take Commissioner, under the County Sheriff. Resolution 220054, authorizing an agreement with Washington Township for annual maintenance costs for use of the Motorola Premier One CAD interface in an amount not to exceed $4,560 through December 31st, 2026.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Prosecutor.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Montgomery County Prosecutor Matt Heck Jr., we have four agreements that need be renewed for this year. The first one is 22-0055. That's an agreement with Lisa Salzberg and Linda Singer of Motley Rice LLC to assist the prosecutor's office in providing legal counsel and assistance to the Board of County Commissioners. We have Resolution 56, which is with David Ackerman, Lisa Salzberg, and Linda Singer of Motley Rice LLC to assist the prosecutor's office in providing legal counsel and assistance to the Board of County Commissioners. Resolution 57 was with Lana Valentine of the law firm of Benzmore &amp; Shoal, LLP, to assist the Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office in providing legal counsel and assistance to Montgomery County, including but not limited to the Board of County Commissioners, the Office of Management and Budget, and all individual governmental members thereof, in an amount not to exceed $7,500. And finally is Resolution 58 with Terrence A. Grady and Catherine R. Dodson of the law firm of Terrence A. Grady &amp; Associates, COLPA, to assist the prosecutor's office in providing legal counsel and assistance to the Board of County Commissioners, in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Auditor's Office.
Under the Auditor's Office, we have three resolutions authorizing purchases. First one is 0059, Insight Public Sector, Inc., for an Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract for not seeing, if I'm saying that correctly, annual cloud subscription software services in an amount not to exceed $57,000 through April 30th, 2023. 0060, Dell Marketing for Microsoft Office 365 Software Renewal, and additional licenses in an amount not to exceed $83,723.52 through December 31st, 2022. And 0061, M&amp;J Technologies for M&amp;J Total Care Annual Subscription Services, in an amount not to exceed $121,995.85 through February 10th, 2023.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Monday Community Correctional Institution, we have two authorizing agreements. 0062, Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board for reimbursement for psychotropic medications, EMDR services, and peer recovery services in an amount not to exceed $183,863 through December 31st, 2022. And Resolution 0063, Smart Communications Holding, Inc., to install and operate an inmate communication system and provide maintenance services through June 15th, 2027.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Law Library.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the Law Library, we have Resolution 0064, renew the Lexus Subscription Amendment for state local government with Lexus Nexus, Inc., for library patrons' access in an amount not to exceed $126,871.8.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under County Administrator, approve the minutes of the meetings, January 11th, 2022. Resolution 0065, approval of bills, list available in the Clerk's Office. Resolution 0066, approval of travel and expenses, list available in the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services, Tyler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a variety of resolutions for your review today. The first is 67. This is the Approval of Personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 68 approves the 2022 through 2024 contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO. Council 8, Local Number 101, the Dayton Public Service Union. 69 authorizes a facility use agreement with the Dayton Society of Natural History, doing businesses Boonshoff Museum of Discovery for use of the main exhibit hall for the Environmental Services Department on April 30th, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $1,800. Resolution 70 authorizes a change order to the agreement with Wise Construction Company for the administration building eighth floor engineers' office and restroom renovation project by extending the term through April 30th of 2022. 71 solicits requests for proposals for the transfer station public entrance project for the Environmental Services Department. 72 grants signature authority to specified county employees to request license plates for county-owned vehicles. And the following four resolutions authorize price agreements for 2022 water treatment chemicals from the Environmental Services Department through December 31st of 2022. The first of which is Resolution 73 with Bonded Chemicals Incorporated. Resolution 74 with Miami Products and Chemical Company. 75 with PBS Knollwood Chemicals Incorporated. And last is 76 with PBS Technologies Incorporated.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are quite pleased that we passed the new contract with ASME. So we would like to take this time right now to go down and sign that we've all... But they're working on it. Excellent. All right. Our next item of business is Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have seven items and one late item. First is Resolution 77, accept an easement deed, authorize an agreement for payment of $2,657,000, and issue a warrant in that amount to Redstone Group, Incorporated, for sewer lines in connection with the Newmark Sanitary Sewer Protection Project, and record the same. Resolution 78, approve the planned specifications and estimated costs of $899,919,000, and solicit bids for the construction of water facilities for the spinning and Eastman Phase 2 water main replacement project. Resolution 79, accept the official check for the Suriya Farms Development, Section 8, in the amount of $72,615,000. Resolution 80, designate the Director of Environmental Services Department to act as the signatory off behalf of the Board of County Commissioners for the issuance of authorizations to discharge wastewater permits. And the next three are to issue revised authorizations to discharge wastewater permits for significant industrial users discharging to the Eastern Regional Water Reclamation Facility. First is Resolution 81 with Community Services. Resolution 82 with Drive Automotive, Incorporated. Resolution 83 with Eastman Kodak Company. Late item. Resolution 107, authorize an agreement for design build services with Alderman Tudie Construction, LLC, for the sanitary conveyance and treatment improvements Western Regional Project, at a cost not to exceed $65,244,900 through December 31st, 2024. If I may speak for just a little bit about that. I'd like to thank our engineering team and our operations team at Environmental Services, as well as the project team at Alderman Tudie for working hard on this for almost three years. Also want to thank County Prosecutor Ward, you and your team, as well as Office Management and Budget John, you and your team, for their assistance in finalizing the contract. Finally, I'd like to thank Commissioners and Michael Holbert for their support on this project. You know, our infrastructure is aging in our system, and to continue providing excellent service, we need to update and replace many of our core facilities and underground infrastructure. The Dryden Road Pretreatment Pumping Facility has been identified as high-risk assets by our operations staff, as well as vertical assessments, studies performed by consultants. This project entails building a new lift station on the Dryden Road property, plus moving our pretreatment process from Dryden Road facility to our Western Regional property. The existing infrastructure will be abandoned. We have about 30,000 sanitary sewer connections, homes, businesses, industries, that flow to our Western Regional Plant. So that's about a third of our system. And this infrastructure we're replacing is critical of providing these services.
Yeah. Absolutely, and you know, it's projects, these kind of investments are what keep us so we don't have even more costly repairs and inconveniences to our citizens. So these are big, huge, complex projects, and it's, I know you've done all the things right to set off on a great road to this ultimately being resolved and ready for the future. All right. Thanks. Do you have a... I move for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Human Services, Tom Kelly.
Western Regional for State Discreet in 2022. We need to amend the agreement by modifying our articles to June 30th, 2022. 85 is with Elizabeth Life Center for the Active Parenting First Five Years Program, in an amount not to exceed $20,473.32 of Ohio Children's Trust Funds. And 86 with the Allen County Board of the Adult and Disabilities, for the Incredible Years Preschool Program, in an amount not to exceed $21,414.44 of Ohio Children's Trust Funds. Then under the Department of Child and Family Services, we have four items. 87 will authorize an affiliation agreement with Arizona State University to provide educational field experiences for undergraduate candidates pursuing a degree in the Social Work Program through December 31st of 2023. 88 will authorize a nice in contract license and professional service agreement under the AT&amp;T Court Master Agreement, in an amount not to exceed $1,269,758.88 for 36 months. 89 will authorize a Cisco WebEx pricing schedule under the AT&amp;T Court Master Agreement, in an amount not to exceed $216,070.56 for 36 months. And 90 will amend the grant agreement for the grant award to the Children's Services Department to fund a Wendy's Wonderful Kids Program by increasing the award amount to $343,200 through June 30th of 2022.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Business Services, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Business Services, Community and Economic Development, Resolution 0091, authorizing support of the Dayton Region Economic Development Strategy, the designation of the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission as a lead agency for the Economic Development District, and endorse the request for an Economic Development District designation from EDA.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Soil and Water Conservation District.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Soil and Water Conservation District, we have several resolutions, all accepting easement deeds for drainage project right of ways for construction and maintenance of the North Clayton Road Group Drainage Project. 0092 is Michael and Sandra Miller. 0093, Ricky and Jody Frye. 0094, Eugene Garber. 0095, Earl and Vivian Valley. 0096, Lloyd Click. 0097, Charles Lake. 0098, John and Janet Riggel. 0099, David and Wanda Click. 0100, Kenneth and May Miller. 0101, Barbara Deaton. 0102, Forrest and Dina Shepherd. 0103, Glenn and Janet Muller. 0104, Alicia Vance. And 0105, Michael and Margaret Caldwell.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And under County Commissioners, we have Resolution 0106 to reappoint Jacqueline Powell to serve on the Montgomery County Convention Facilities Authority Board through December 31st, 2025. Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, do we have any comments by citizens? We do not. Comments, Chris, on behalf of the County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the $65 million project spoken by the Director of Environmental Services here a few minutes ago. The sewer modernization and replacement tunnel, known as the SMART project, has been three years in the making. We're finally beginning construction on this project. We're going to replace some sewer infrastructure that has passed its life cycle. As we do that, we're also going to consolidate our water treatment operations in the Western Regional Water Reclamation Facility in Wescarleton. The sewer water that was treated at Wescarleton Facility will then be safely released back into our rivers. This is a massive project, and we'd like to thank Director Matt Hilliard and his team for taking on the project, so nobody has to worry about our sewer system, thanks to Matt's team in the future.
All right. I think we all echo that.
Mm-hmm.
Also, today is National Day of Racial Healing, and as we all know, yesterday was Martin Luther King Holiday, and I had the honor and privilege to participate in the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Dayton March and Rally, as well as speak at the NAACP Virtual Event. And remembering the life and legacy of Dr. King is so important. In one of his letters he wrote from Birmingham, he said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at the times of challenge and controversy." And this, I think, especially holds true for our community, because I think everyone here can certainly agree that we have weathered a great many challenges and controversy, especially in recent years. And we must continue to do so, working together as a community. We are still recovering from the 2019 tornadoes, and as you know, by the looks of all of our faces, we know that the pandemic is still a huge concern for everyone around the world. But we are still determined to invest in our citizens so we can pull through this time, as difficult as it may be, together as a unit, because we can do anything if we work together. And I really do believe, although I would not want to have any of these challenges coming our way, I do think that when we work together, we become stronger, and we're ready for some easy times ahead. But you know, days like yesterday really bring it to focus on all that we've accomplished, but oh, so much that we have to do. Anyone have any comments?
No, that was perfect. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Every, you know, every year as we celebrate MLK Day, MLK Weekend, you know, last year there wasn't a march and the events were all virtual, but I think this year it really became more poignant for so many, you know, as we've been trying to do the work and get frustrated and think, well, nothing's changing. That's why we have to soldier on, and we just have to keep doing the work every day, because it isn't easy. And, but I'm sure Dr. King would be very disappointed in us as a country, and we just, we just, all of us that care, we have to keep doing what we do.
Well, and I'm sure you all noticed too, yesterday, a lot of his comments made so many years ago are as relevant today as they were then.
Yeah.
We're still struggling with the same struggles over voting rights and on and on. So it really hit home yesterday, and we do need to keep soldiering on.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Carolyn talked about investment, and that's one of the things we, probably for five or six years, we, you know, instead of saying spending government dollars, we talk about investment, because we truly believe that the things that we are doing is an investment in our community. The work that all of you do that are out here, it's an investment in our community. And one of our investments that we've been making for, gosh, almost 10 years now, is for our children, and we're excited this year to be teaming, I mean, we've, let me back up about that. The county's been investing in children a lot longer than that, but we've been investing in the Preschool Promise for eight years, and we are, and we're happy to do that. So this weekend, we're very excited that we're going to be teaming up with Preschool Promise for our, I believe this is our very first Early Learning Job Fair. Yeah. And we all know how critical preschool teachers are, and it's getting harder and harder to find a preschool teacher, be a preschool teacher. And I think that one of the reasons is, is because, hey, it's just not, it's not commensurate with the challenge, especially over the last couple of years. So we are hosting this Early Learning Job Fair along with Preschool Promise. It'll be this Saturday from 10 to 2. Encourage anybody you know that's interested in the field to come on out. It'll be at the Job Center from 10 to 2, our Job Center on Edwin Moses Boulevard. And this Job Fair will bring together many of our local childcare businesses, and you know, there are, like I said, there's many opportunities in this area, and these positions are so critical to the development of our children. You know, we want to make sure that they're ready for kindergarten, that they're prepared intellectually, emotionally, and socially for school. And once you've started in the field, Preschool Promise has some excellent programs that allow you to grow to your, within your career and professional development, and there are also stipends for additional education. And as we continue to talk about federal dollars, you know, we're kind of keeping our fingers crossed that there'll be more money, not only for parents to want to enroll their children in a high-quality program, but also that there will be money that we can pay these childcare workers what they deserve. So for anyone that's interested, you can find more information and register for the event at www.thejobcenter.org/jobfair. So again, this is, this is a good one. I like that they're doing it on a Saturday for people that maybe have another job right now, but if you can, encourage anyone, because we are, not just, not just in our county, in our state, the country, we are short on future. So please, 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 let's make sure that we're getting people into those careers. So, for me, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Rice talked just a minute ago about the tornado, and talked about it earlier, and whether it is a weather or water emergency, a shooting incident, or any other type of emergency, we have an alert system that lets residents quickly know what is happening. Now, it's called Code RED. That's C-O-D-E-R-E-D. And that's how our emergency management team will be able to quickly communicate, communicate to community members. There is no fee for you to receive these alerts, but you need to register for the service. Now, you can find directions on how to do this on our webpage, and that's www.mcohio.org/alert. And that's mcohio.org/alert. Please sign up for this free service, so we can help keep you all safe. All right. Our next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be held next Tuesday, January 25th, at 1:30 p.m. In the meantime, stay warm, stay well, stay masked, distanced, sanitary as far as your hands, and honestly, if you know anyone not vaccinated, please encourage them to do so, if at all possible, because the more people are vaccinated, hopefully, we can get through this pandemic safely.